So this is me, Sarah Wolf, calling to order the virtual November 17th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight. Thank you to the 1623 Studios for recording the meeting and posting it for us. We will begin with public comment. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this is an opportunity for comment, not debate. As the Massachusetts Association of School Committees policy states, "A school committee meeting is a meeting of a government body at which members of the body deliberate over public business. We welcome the attendance of members of the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting, but these meetings are not designed to be an opportunity for dialogue." Please know that while we will not be immediately responding to your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on items that are listed on our posted agenda. And if you would like to make a comment, please put your name and address in the chat. That just helps us make sure the minutes are accurate. Please do not make other comments in the chat. We allot 20 minutes total for public comment, and we ask each person to delimit their comments to three minutes. If there are quite a few people, you might want to just try to make sure your comments are pithy. I will be timing the comments tonight, and I will ring my bell after two and a half minutes to let you know your time is almost up. After public comment is over, the chat function will be turned off to allow us all to devote our full attention to the meeting. So, we begin with public comment. I'm not seeing any in the chat. Are there any people on the phone who would like to make a comment? Oh, Karen. Karen Carroll, would you like to make your comment?
I think we need to unmute Karen.
Oh, Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Dear members of the school committee, for the record, I am Karen Carroll of 124 Eastern Avenue in Essex, an MERS parent and public health professional in a nearby Cape Town community. I've spent the better part of the last year managing this public health emergency. Where I work, I have engaged in dialogue with city administration and staff, the entire school community, as well as community members regarding this ongoing pandemic and the safe return to in-person instruction at our schools, as well as many businesses and employers to help manage the risk, understand the data, and return to work safely. Given the clear science that in-person learning is better for youth's physical and emotional health, I am here tonight to ask the school committee to act with urgency and bring our middle and high school students back to some in-person learning immediately. It can be done safely, and it should be done now. Every day of missing in-person instruction matters. The Massachusetts chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics last week showed some further data on the outcomes that pediatricians in our state are observing regularly: rapid weight gain and increased obesity in school-aged children, increased hospitalization for youth's suicide attempts, increase in other mental health issues, and they are seeing little transmission of COVID-19 in the community. Our district has always prided itself on being an evidence-based district, and I urge you to follow the science now when it matters the most. I understand it's hard and scary, but I also know that this will be with us for a while longer, and we must adapt. It's clear that we all agree that in-person learning needs to happen, but our parents are urging you tonight to make this happen as soon as possible. January 18th is too far away. It's another two months, too long, that our youths will be isolated, home, alone, without structure, friends, supportive adults, and all the other things kids need from schools. As that January date is also around the projected peak of the flu season, coupled with COVID-19, it could mean the planned opening is delayed even further. If that happens, it has the possibility of leaving our kids out of school for over a year. I am not okay with that, and you should not be either. It is imperative that the time available between now and January is given to our children for their academic and emotional well-being. Nothing has changed, or will change, by January 18th to make this easier. Money, space, staffing are all very real issues to grapple with, but I believe we can, as other districts have, deal with these issues together. I know this committee has come to you to prioritize our kids and support our teachers and the school administration.
I think we lost Karen, and that was actually three minutes.
... and concerning health effects on youth learning remotely.
Okay, Karen, I'm sorry, your three minutes is more than up. Thank you, though.
Okay, our kids deserve better, and you have the authority to make it happen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And Peggy Hegarty-Stuck is next.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight as a high school parent. I want to say that I know that the current environment that we're all living in and trying to work in is fairly challenging, and that we all, as parents and school staff, want what's best for the kids. Our students are now part of the COVID generation of kids who will feel the detrimental educational and emotional effects of this experience for years to come. I wanted to first note that while I appreciate that the online learning has become more structured than it was in the spring, despite this added structure, remote learning is just not adequate. Things are still very academically challenging for most of the high school students. Our kids are spending endless hours online for Zoom and then hours online for homework. They're more isolated, left to navigate many things on their own. As parents, we are all providing a lot of assistance at home while going to work and trying to work remotely ourselves. The organizational and academic skills students need to manage their classes and work remotely without adequate academic, technical, and peer support is leaving a lot of kids behind. Our high schools have not had any in-person learning since March, yet they're being held to high standards based on a typical in-person learning environment. I think there's a big disconnect between remote learning and the realities of remote learning. Our kids and our families are really struggling, and I think there is a false assumption that because our students are older, that they don't need help. As a parent of a junior, I'm also concerned about the losses for juniors and seniors, and I did hear the same sentiment in the spring for the previous year's students. I'm concerned about our kids' readiness for the college process, and that right now there's just not as much communication and tracking as students need because of the constraints of the current learning environment. And as a school community, we need to be doing more to support the kids. And I agree with Karen wholeheartedly that I think we need to hasten the process toward getting kids back in school. A lot of work was done in August and September by all of you and the school community to figure out how to get kids back in person, and our collective goal should be to start as soon as possible. January 18th feels like a long time to wait, and every week we wait, our kids lose. The governor and the state officials have been clear about the importance of getting kids back to school, and Karen has noted those detrimental effects in terms of health and mental health. And my fear is that if we stick with the late June date, that, as Karen mentioned, the flu season will kick in, and that we may end up not getting back to any in-person learning for high school students, or possibly much, much later in the year. So I strongly urge you to move up the timetable so that we can get kids back to some amount of in-person learning as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And then Jeff is up.
Hi, my name is Jeff Carvelado. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jeff Carvelado. I live in Manchester, and I am the parent of an eighth-grade daughter and a fourth-grade son. I'm also a school administrator in a neighboring community and a former social studies teacher at Manchester Essex High School. I want to start by saying that as a parent who specifically moved to this community for the school system, I'm extremely disappointed and discouraged that our middle and high school children have not returned to school. The school district has made a mistake by not returning to school in a hybrid model in September, and continues to compound the error at the expense of our children by not planning on returning to school for two more months. This will mean that our middle and high school children will not set foot in the classroom for almost a year. Our school used to serve as a model of excellence for educators in other districts, and sadly, this is no longer true. Many families are now choosing private school or homeschooling, a choice that represents a voice of no confidence in our school district. Many of the schools in our area have returned to school successfully, including our elementary schools, and data from throughout the state has shown that in-person learning in a hybrid model presents a very low risk for the spread of COVID-19. Even schools and communities with significantly higher COVID infection rates than ours have safely returned to their classrooms. With a few basic strategies, including mask-wearing, social distancing, enhanced cleaning, and robust contract tracing, school is safe for both students and faculty. In fact, I believe that a well-run hybrid school can be one of the safest public spaces children go to because of the school's ability to mitigate the risk factors. Conversely, more and more information is coming out to show that remote learning is unhealthy for children's physical and mental health, in addition to not being academically effective. A concerning rise in depression, self-harm, suicide attempts, and other acute mental illness crises have been associated with the isolation created by remote learning, as had an increase in obesity and other physical ailments. As an educator, I do not understand why Manchester Essex is choosing to keep our children home for two more months rather than doing everything they can to open school now. Opening school in a hybrid model is challenging, but with creative problem-solving and teamwork between administrators, teachers, custodians, and technology support staff, almost every other school in our area has proven it can be done safely and effectively. Our kids need to be in their classrooms as soon as possible, so I am joining other parents in advocating for a December 1st return to school. And I also just want to add, my daughter began her remote learning at eight o'clock this morning. She was home today by herself because my wife, and myself, and my son are not here, and she just finished her work about half an hour ago, and did not really interact with any other people and stayed in her bedroom that entire time, and that's just not acceptable. So, thank you for the time and the comment.
Thank you, Jeff. Eric Tolo. Eric, are you there? Yes.
Okay, hi. My name is Eric Tolo, and I live at 49 Martin Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. I'm an orthopedic surgeon and a father of four boys who have been educated at Manchester Essex. Currently, I have a high school senior, freshman, and a seventh grader enrolled. I wanted to provide my perspective as a physician and as a parent on the effects of remote learning, and echo the sentiments of the parents that have recently, that have just spoken about getting our kids back sooner. I wanted to talk about a TED Talk that was given by Rita Pearson in 2013, many of you may know, called "Every Kid Needs a Champion." Ms. Pearson is a lifelong educator, and in this talk, she emphasized the value and importance of human connection, proclaiming that, quote, "Learning requires a relationship." In order for a child to be engaged, motivated, and ready to successfully learn, they need to be connected to their teacher. Remote learning cannot effectively provide that connection. Brief meetings on Highland Field cannot provide that connection. Remote learning creates isolation from teachers and from peers. In a recent New York Times article indicated that 25% of teens did not feel connected to their teachers, classmates, or community. A recent large survey of teens in remote learning conducted by a 4-H Council demonstrated 70% felt depressed, anxious, or highly stressed, and 61% indicated that the pandemic had caused them to feel lonely. This isolation that Jeff just mentioned, from peers and teachers in a remote learning environment, has been widely reported to have worsening effects on mental health in these vulnerable adolescent learners. So as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education updated their recommendations regarding schools on November 6th, they stated, quote, "With numerous examples of schools reopening around the world and across the country in recent firsthand experience here in Massachusetts, it is increasingly clear that schools are not the sources of significant COVID transmission so long as proper health and safety protocols are followed." The National COVID School Response Dashboard that Emily Oster and her colleagues at Brown University recently published has been widely quoted, and this study looked at positive cases in over 500 schools in 46 states. Over 300 schools had some level of in-person classes. The case positivity rate for students and for teachers were exceedingly low, and in fact, remote positivity rates were approximately the same. Recently, the Massachusetts Department of Education has reported on their website, looking at elementary and secondary schools and positive COVID cases, both in students and in teachers. Most recent data on their website from November 5th to November 11th demonstrates that 185 students out of approximately 450,000 students tested positive, per a rate that is much less than 0.02%. And for district staff, there are 157 positive cases out of greater than 75,000 staff, with a positivity rate of less than 0.2%. So these numbers are very low and indicated that when appropriate safety measures are taken, both our children and teachers can be kept safe. Lastly, Justin Reich, who is the director of the Teaching Systems Lab at MIT, has been studying technology and education for 15 years, interviewed teachers several months ago to study remote learning impact on teachers from the teacher's perspective, and I think this is something that we don't really talk much about. Teachers, these were from public, private, and charter school systems, and three themes emerged during these interviews. Number one, student motivation was challenging. There was a struggle to motivate through two layers of computer screens. Number two, professional loss and burnout.
I'm sorry to cut off, but you're...
Teachers lost familiar means of teaching. They also lost a fundamental sense of their own efficacy and personal identity. And lastly, exacerbated inequalities. The teacher's sense of loss grows deeper as teachers witness dramatic intensifications of societal inequalities. So change can start from the top, and I implore the school committee and the superintendent to strongly consider getting our kids back sooner. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thanks, Eric. And if everybody could just try to keep it to three minutes, because we do have quite a few people who are making comments tonight, and we are short on time. Michael and Heather Richard.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity, everybody. I guess I just have a minute and a half, so I'll be quick, since we have to share here. So, I would echo most of the comments this evening. We would say that the last several months, while they may have served a functional purpose, have not, in our minds, been beneficial to our two seniors from a social and mental perspective. We feel that this has really been a social experiment, never tried before in the history of mankind, and it's not working. At the end of the day, we're all social creatures. We need regular human interaction beyond just a computer screen. We spent the last probably 20 years telling our kids to get off the screen, and now we're telling them to stay on the screen in the basement. You know, as we look around at other districts, nearby districts, we feel like they've figured it out. While not ideal, they've given it a try. They tried early on, they've had some fits and starts, but they keep going. And they're very similar to us in terms of virus and many other things. I would say, lastly, that this is our children's senior year. They work for 11 years to get here. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them to finish their year strong, and doing that in their basement or their bedroom is really not ideal. And we would ask, as many other parents have tonight, that you accelerate the opening and consider things other than just the functional aspects of remote learning to get our kids back in school. So, that's it.
Hi, I'm Heather. Just wanted to say I'm in support of all the speakers this evening, and I know we all have the same goal in wanting to get our children back in the classroom. I just feel it's such a shame that these kids have lost, you know, the end of their junior year, the end of their senior year, or the beginning of their senior year, and when it should be such a time to prepare them for their, whatever their plans may be. You know, not everyone's going to college, but whatever their next step is, to reach out to their peers and discuss that, bounce ideas off of them, meet with their guidance counselors in person, and really get some structure to the planning process, because it's overwhelming. And we're trying now to navigate it ourselves. We have a daughter who studies in Ireland, and Tess is interested in pursuing that avenue, and it's just challenging to try to navigate and figure the steps to getting those applications in. But more than that, the emotional, the mental piece is huge. I mean, we see it in both Henry and Tess. It's, they're lucky they have each other in the house, but it's, they're there constantly, as all of your children are, just sitting in front of the screen and trying to do lab experiments in front of a screen. Tess mentioned this morning, you know, it'd be nice to be in a group and go over the lab experiments. It's just not the same, obviously, and that's a huge piece because she is, you know, she's involved in some science courses. You know, just sharing the excitement with their peers in terms of moving forward. Also, you know, Henry misses the social interaction, obviously. They're not completely outgoing kids, so these times with their peers at school are really important, and I think just having them at home is just causing them to kind of sink back and lose some of that emotional support. So, we just, we just hope that we can all work together and get this done. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so it's been 20 minutes, but I know we've got Kim and Jen are both waiting to talk. So Kim and Jen, if you could take your turns and kind of try to make your points, especially if there are points that haven't already been made, that would be great, and then we'll end public comment after Jen. So, Kim, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll be short and sweet. I appreciate everybody who's spoken beforehand, and of course, I'm full on board with what they said. What I think would be helpful, my comment tonight would be to understand more about the YMCA program that's currently in the middle school and high school, and obviously there's kids in the school right now who are utilizing the school, have their COVID cases, how's that going, how is the maintenance going? So some protocols in place that are keeping students in the building, albeit not ours. And does that program, now that they're at the middle school and high school, have any impact on our ability to get our school kids into the school sooner? Is there a contract in place? Is there anything? So if at the end of the day, the school committee decided to move up the timeline for our kids, would the YMCA program impact that? That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Kim. And then Jen. Jen, Tolo, did you want to make a comment? I feel like maybe she's trying to talk and not able to talk. All right, let's let Cheryl go ahead and see if...
Am I unmuted? Hello?
Oh, is that Jen?
Yes, that's me.
Oh, very good. Go ahead, Jen.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jennifer Tolo, and I live at 49 Martin Street in Essex, Massachusetts. I have three kids currently in the school system. I have a senior, I have a freshman, and I have a seventh grader. I am a whole health educator, and I specialize in social, emotional health and well-being. I wanted to speak tonight on the priority of the school committee or the school district to focus on academic rigor. I have three different kids and three different learners. One of my sons is on an IEP and struggling right now with accessing the education. Even following the IEP has been challenging, because although there's support on paper, it's really difficult when you have a remote learning situation. It's very difficult for the teacher to see that a child's not understanding, and a child that doesn't really feel confident has a hard time speaking up in a remote learning setting. My son is, has some support outside of the classroom, but is really struggling right now in his senior year. And then I have my ninth grader is doing just fine, although he's finding it very challenging and very difficult to be online. But my seventh grader, who is a high-achieving kid, I am slowly seeing the spark just dim in him. He is struggling with the disconnection, and that's his biggest complaint, is the disconnection with the teachers, and his grades are showing that. Now, I wanted to talk about the fact that when we focus on academic rigor, we're really focusing on about 5% to 10% of the student population, leaving the 80% of the student population struggling, and their needs not really being met. And the special education community, on top of that, we have amazing special education teachers, and they are working above and beyond to support these kids as best they can. There's research that was in The American Psychologist that was from 2018 by Luther that looked at youth in high-achieving schools and the challenges to their mental health, and I know much of that has been touched on, but this was looking at kids in high-achieving schools, when the emphasis is on achievement, that it can affect the kids socially and emotionally, and it can affect kids some extrinsically, their behaviors extrinsically, which is really focusing on substance abuse and disengagement with school. And there's also the intrinsic effects, which are the anxiety and depression. Now, this research was showing that kids that are intrinsically motivated and have that high functioning ability, they show more intrinsic behaviors with anxiety and depression, but that their long-term learning isn't as affected as kids that are struggling academically but do not have that drive or motivation for learning, that they tend to focus on external behaviors, and that is the most detrimental. And that's my biggest concern, because the high-risk behaviors, as we look at the youth behavior risk surveys, the high-risk behaviors in our community are already concerning.
Jen, that's three.
And so this remote learning, where it disconnects kids and they feel not supported, and 90% of communication is body language, and when you're in a remote learning situation, you can't observe a kid or a classroom that is not keeping up with what the teacher is saying, and not keeping up with the progress of the classroom. So I really urge you to consider, particularly for kids with learning disabilities and special needs, to get them back in school as soon as possible, and to get our middle school and our high school back as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jen. Just on that note, Cheryl Melvey wanted to make a comment, and I told her she couldn't, but her comment was that there's a CPAC meeting coming up on Thursday at 6:00. So I wanted to make sure I said that before I forget. Okay, so thank you all for your comments. I know this is, it's a really hard time. So thank you for being with us. Thank you for contributing during public comment, for coming to the meeting, and thank you for caring about all of our MERSD students. I know you might not believe this, but we do share your concerns, as well as the common goal of getting the kids back to school. We're all parents on the school board right now. That's not true all the time. Some of us have teenagers and college-age students, and some of us have very young students, and we have kids at all the ages. So we do share all of your concerns, and we are always happy to hear from you. If you have questions that have not been answered, please just talk to your administrators or your elected representatives or members of the advisory group, which means every other week. Also, can you please mute your mic, especially if you're recently called in, because I can hear somebody chewing? Okay, moving on. If you, if your child is experiencing any of the mental health complications that we heard about in the comments tonight as a result of remote learning, I really urge you to reach out to our counseling staff. They are there, they are available to help, they're wonderful. And if your child is having academic or other difficulties or guidance, I mean, please reach out to those faculty and staff as well. We understand that you all might not agree with our decisions. If you want to know more about the painstaking process that we have gone through since last March, I invite you to watch the recordings of the meetings and read the minutes. If you do so, it may become clear to you that the school committee, the administrative team, and the teachers are all working cooperatively to ensure the best possible educational delivery during this unprecedented time. As we reconsider opening, as we consider reopening in a hybrid model, we have been obligated to consider many factors: the quality of the educational program we will be able to provide, given the restrictions of the guidance we have received; the social, emotional concerns for children in each of the models, there are concerns in hybrid as well as in remote; staffing challenges due to teachers who are unable to work in person in the COVID environment, and the financial implications of implementing the model. We have to determine not only what is best for our students right now, but also plan for educational delivery a year from now and five years from now. So we do have to take all of these factors into consideration as we make our decisions. And so I just want to let you know that we do care very deeply about the children. And I just want to let you know that we do care very deeply about the children. That's why we do this volunteer work, and we are all working toward the same goal of getting the kids back to school. So please be assured that we are doing our best. We're focused on the education, well-being, and health of your children, and we are striving to make decisions that will meet the needs of our students and our community and our member towns. So thanks again for being here. I hope that you will stay for the rest of the meeting. And that's my report, and I should have done the student report first. Is Lucas with us?
I am, yep.
Lucas, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over your turn.
No problem.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, overall, I think that, you know, everything's been going pretty well. First quarter for students just ended, and so we're now beginning second quarter. And you know, the transition between first quarter and second quarter is always good because it kind of gives students the ability to kind of like reflect on what went well and what didn't in the first quarter in order to like hopefully improve the second quarter. I think that teachers have been, you know, have been and are continuing to do a really good job in terms of communication, keep the class engaged as best as they can, and just, you know, maintaining the rigor of the course. It's certainly not perfect, but I think it's like the best it can be with online learning. And so, yeah, that's pretty much everything I have to say. Like I said before, there's not really much I have to report on. I think the negatives of online learning have been thoroughly outlined. So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I haven't really personally experienced anything new that's been particularly concerning, so, yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Lucas. Does anybody have questions for Lucas?
I do, Dani. Hi, Lucas. Are you a psychologist right now? And what's the stat? I mean, you don't have to tell us anything that you don't want to share, but I just wondered about this process.
So I'm a junior, I'm not a senior, so I'm not-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. Okay, well, you fooled me. Thanks.
Anyone else have questions for Lucas who's a junior? No. Okay, Lucas, thank you so much for being with us and for sharing your experience as we go through this really crazy time. All right, so next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So move.
I'll second it.
Awesome. Any, you guys have to remember to say your names. That was Annie. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor by roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Annie, Annie and Shannon. Matt?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'm a me. All right, subcommittee reports. Facilities.
We had a building committee meeting last week. It was a very efficient meeting. Standard fare, we're still on time, still on budget, and I don't think there was anything critical. I think we are going to be looking at the budget again and also looking at the CE list to see if there was anything that we wanted to revisit on that. But all is well with the building project.
We did see an awesome drone video of what it looks like and all of the steel structures up. I don't know if that was posted on the website, but if anybody gets a chance to look at that, if it is posted, it's awesome. It's great. It's likely buried in the construction report, so we can try to pull that out and put it in a more prominent space so people can find it.
All right. Finance committee.
We have nothing to report, other than we have a meeting coming up on the 20th, which is this Friday, and our last meeting was just prior to our last school committee meeting. So it's been pretty quiet.
Could the finance, I don't know, we never really firmed up to the whole shadowing program, but could you guys, I believe, and-
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So Matt is going to shadow and dial into the calls just to see what's going on. And he has pretty extensive, well, I don't want to speak for you, Matt, you're there. I mean, he's got very extensive experience.
That's awesome. And then is Teresa going to be shadowing Annie?
I did not tell Teresa about our Friday morning meeting, but Teresa, there's a meeting on Friday at 8:00.
I can do that.
So there's a question there.
We can probably work it out.
Yeah, we can't all go, you can't all go to the meeting, because that's a forum. So you just have to work on keeping each other informed or something.
Okay.
Okay. Don't go into a year with nobody with experience knowing what happened.
But do we want to have a rotating thing? Matt goes one week, Shannon, or Teresa goes another? Is that possible?
I think we'll have to.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely possible, whatever you like. I was just going to give the warning that we can't have everybody at one meeting.
Yeah.
We could also reduce some, well, I guess the same rule applies. I was going to say we could do some pre-meeting work, but we can't.
How about if we do an offline coordination of who can, who's available?
Yep, that sounds good. So I'm going to need our public meetings, so they're not recorded or anything like that.
Someone hilariously, Caroline, I need to mute. I don't know if you can hear her.
I need to ask them quietly because I'm going to-
I don't know how long it will be before I am, and who might be kissing her about human even-
I texted her.
Caroline.
Each fire or swallow a sword or put a leg on their head. They don't get to make that trade.
She's going to be horrified.
Behind your head, but the point is-
There we go.
Okay. So I will trust you finance committee and the finance committee shadowers to work that out offline, but that's it. Then I believe there's no, no report from policy or negotiation committee yet. We haven't started formal negotiations on the next round, but I know that the leadership teams are working to get that going for us. And then I will pass it off to Pam.
Thanks, Sarah. I'll just start by, just a few comments, similar sentiments to what Sarah mentioned post-public comment. We do hear you, and we are very empathetic to the cause, and we are working diligently to bring our students back as quickly as possible. We did lay out a timeline very early in the process that included a mid-year changeover. We did submit that to the Department of Ed, and it has been accepted. That being said, it doesn't mean it can't be changed. So if the committee wants to have some discussion at the end of my report about changing up the timeline, we can talk about the feasibility of that. So my following comments will really be just a status report on where we are, given the timeline that we've established to this point in time. One other comment in terms of looking comparatively at other districts. I, I do caution to too many comparisons, because I feel like all districts have made choices about where to put emphasis and where not to. And we can certainly go town by town and compare who's doing what, who's offering X amount of instructional hours, who's placed importance on program, who's placed importance on the physical presence, whether it's a half day, a full day, a partial day with lunch, with not. There are as many variations on hybrid design as there are communities within the Commonwealth. And I know from talking with my colleagues regularly that we are all working together to learn from one another, to borrow from one another, and implement the best parts of everyone's programs and approaches. So we are open to ideas, we are open to counsel, and we continue to make our best effort on the behalf of all of our students. And again, if you feel like your students are struggling at home, your children are struggling at home, we are bringing students onto campus on a regular basis to work with our counseling staff or to be provided guidance if engagement is a concern. So I encourage you to reach out to your principals. They are there to assist you with this, to reach out to the counselors if you have a relationship with them. If you don't, your classroom teachers or your principals can make that connection for you. So we are here to help. Our kids' mental health is as important to us as anything else, and I think we have proven over the past years that our emphasis is on social, emotional learning. We also have a responsibility to develop a program, and what we did do first and foremost in designing our return to school was to focus on the extensive feedback that we got from parents last year about what the majority of people wanted to see in program design going forward. So I'll get to a bit of a rundown of where we are in just a second. Two other things to mention, both Tricia Puglisi and Joanne Mayna will be the, our main agenda, our only agenda item, other than some budget discussion on December 1st, is going through the how will it look component of the hybrid as we have it envisioned for January 18th, sorry, January 19th, the post-long weekend turn of the semester. There's a lot of why into why we would wait for the semester primarily because schedules change. So the deployment of staff, the utilization of space, and the balancing of the cohorts would be, will be different from one semester to the next. So we had always targeted the semester break with the implementation of new schedules. They will be able to share with you some firsthand information from students. When we have had the onsite activities, they did some data gathering and exit ticketing of students to check in with them to see how they were coping throughout. So I think their voice is important in how they're doing. Parent observation is equally important, but I think from the students' voices, we may gain even greater insight onto where we should be focusing our energy. And then on the, on the question or concern about the YMCA, the YMCA right now is slated and knows that it needs to move when we implement hybrid, whether that is on January the 18th slash 19th, or whether we move up the timetable and would decide to go with an early December move. It may cause some disruption to parents with younger children in terms of first identifying a new location. We've been working on that on our current timetable. We'd have to accelerate that, and depending on where we land, it could mean a bit more of a drive for drop-off or perhaps even having to go to Beverly or Ipswich to access space. So we are working on that, again, in alignment with the timeline that we've established to date. So that's just a little, I think people will find next school committee meeting helpful in understanding what, what the hybrid will look like in its implementation and what kind of the daily life of school will be for kids. I think it's important, we all agree that screen time has become something that we, we can't manage necessarily the way that we want because it is our primary means of delivering instruction. And I think we've been very upfront that it will continue to be a key component of instruction, even with the implementation of hybrid and in-person learning. Because of our utilization of space and because of the model we've chosen, which is to keep students at home fully engaged in a complete program while they are on their off days, students will still be engaging and utilizing the remote platform for a means of accessing instruction. So I just don't want that to get lost in the discussion, that in-person does not return us to a pre-COVID situation where it's all live instruction in the building, and that's where our staffing issues do come in, and resolution of those are probably our primary work over the next two weeks. So let me just put up the timeline. I'm actually going to start before I get, well, actually, I'll reverse course and stick with the timeline. So, just one second. Those are my public service announcements for the end. So as it stands today, the family participation survey is in circulation to families. We had a pretty good, fast response. I think each school has at least 100, if not more, respondents at this point, and it's tracking to what we knew in the summer, that we have a solid 90% plus of families who are responding, ready and willing to come back when the doors are open for kids to be in person for part of the week. Again, I mentioned that on 12-1, Tricia and Joanne will be here to run you through how the hybrid's been revised since its first presentation this summer and how they're going to manage schedule space and staff when we return to the building. We are working daily on resolving staffing and personnel issues. As I've said in earlier meetings, we had 16-plus individuals at the middle high school who had put in for some type of leave or accommodation. That has, is a tremendous impact if all of those people don't return to in-person learning. If you think about a typical high school schedule or middle school schedule, one teacher teaches five sections. So if we were not, if we were to lose an English teacher, for example, and not be able to return or hire a highly qualified teacher to take that individual's place, you, a student, 100 students would not be receiving English from the top-quality English teacher that we have there today. Same for math, same for science. So we're seeing that we are working through personnel issues that hit our core instructional areas heavily. We are having a lot of positive interaction with the association and able to move this ball forward, and we're hopeful statistically at the elementary school, it was a much smaller number of staff, it was four staff that we were dealing with, and there we saw 50% of the people qualified to not return and 50% of the people did return. If that's, if that tracks to the middle high school, I'm not certain that it will, but if we just take that as an assumption, that would mean we are replacing seven content area teachers prior to opening the doors. That's a pretty heavy lift to find that many people who can come in and teach in a high flex model and have the technical skill level that we've trained our staff to and the content area skill level that we'll need folks to have. Speaking with colleagues in other districts, I know this has come up as an issue for folks in different areas where it happens that a highly qualified AP teacher of a key subject may not be available to teach that subject. So therefore, either the class would have to be canceled or you go with some type of third-party, some third-party support system, which we may have to do for foreign language. And we'll get into the particulars of that on 12-1. So please know that we've been taking this time to very much dive deep into the personnel issues and try to resolve as many to the benefit of our students and to the health and safety needs of our staff as possible. We're going to follow the school committee meeting with the town hall, which will be a Q and A session for Tricia and Joanne. So what we're finding is it's, the conversation about the elementary and the conversation about the secondary is very different. You've heard Tricia talk in the past that the scheduling complexity at the secondary level really drives a lot of the decisions. It's not impossible. We could have made different choices and been in a different place right now. But what we've been trying to do is to allow for, and we believe we've achieved a means of doing so, allowing students to keep their full seven-period rotating schedule that they would typically have and do that whether they are in an in-person day or an at-home day. So on any given day, what they're doing today will be replicated in school, and they'll be participating at home if they're on their home cohort. So we are going to move our entire traditional schedule into this high flex model. So students will be receiving a full academic program every day of the week, barring half-days, snow, or weather-related power outage, missed day, or something to that effect. So we are trying to replicate our, our school year in this new environment. There will be onsite activities for December. My understanding, and again, Tricia and Joanne will be able to give you greater detail, is that those are going to be walkthrough days where the focus will be on acclimating students to what the protocols are going to be when they're in the building, doing their typical beginning of the year safety drills, and getting the lay of the land for what it looks like so they can do any troubleshooting if there are any issues around passing or distancing and some of the structures that they've put together. And again, running parallel to this entire process is ensuring that we have a complete MOA, which is a contract amendment that deals specifically with the working conditions that the hybrid implementation may create. So we are, as every other school district, responsible for having a collective bargaining with our teachers' representatives and coming up with a contract that's agreed to by them and the school committee, and it is preferable that we have it in place before we begin the work. So that's the timeline, and I offered the timeline with the question and in full consideration that the, the committee may want us to accelerate the timeline. If that is the case, we just need to know, and I know the team, and the team will roll up their sleeves and figure out what can be done. done and then be able to give you pros and cons of going in that direction on 12-1. So if you'd like to see an accelerated, I, it is not possible to execute on 12-1, but if you'd like to see on 12-1, a timeline that gets us in either before the holiday break or just after the holiday break, we can certainly bring that on that night. So I guess I'd offer that question to the committee before we move forward.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
So if we were to accelerate the model to, I don't think before Christmas is likely, but maybe right after Christmas, what's your biggest hurdle there? And how, and how would you, how would you address that if we were to, sorry, right after Christmas?
I think I need Tricia and Joanne to sit down and tell me what the hurdles are. Because they have an understanding of how to put the pieces together far better than I do.
I think as part of their presentation, that should be, you know, wound into part of the presentation.
I think we need to be realistic that opening before Christmas or opening before the holiday is probably not likely, but maybe shortly after. Can we ask what that might look like? Is that what you were thinking, Sarah?
Yeah.
And I'm also thinking out loud, I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud, that is before the semester switch. So that would affect kids' courses, the last, you know, couple of weeks of their courses, right?
Yes.
Just one thing to kind of opening around the holidays. And I know I've heard anecdotally some schools are building in like a week or two-week buffer following holidays because people are getting together and that's a time when infections might occur and can be identified before it comes back into the school. Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Didn't Charlie Baker say we couldn't do that?
Yes, and I'm sure everybody is listening to Charlie Baker and avoiding all holiday But maybe it makes sense to be cautious there. Any other schools? I think it's just us to know what the whole, the whole picture is, so.
Sure, so we can include that, that what Matt's comment is definitely a line of discussion that is taking place within among districts. And it kind of ties into, we have a subgroup of our Fall '20, which I guess we'll need to make just 2021 now, advisory group. So it's the advisory group that has parents, all the, representatives of all the different schools, for, for parents, for administration. We've got media representatives, school committee on there, Department of Health reps. So it's kind of the, it's the think tank of stakeholders that gets together regularly to discuss kind of the process of what started as the process of reentry and now kind of monitoring the process and the next steps that we're taking. So there's a subgroup of that, so all of the medically affiliated folks, so our Board of Health reps and our school nurses are getting together and educating me and going through a process of investigating whether or not bringing on surveillance testing, maybe something that is in our best interest. This comes from originally in our indicators, we had a testing protocol, a local testing protocol that we thought may be advantageous to us. To Matt's point, I think one of the parts of the discussion that's being had is, do you do this in the week or so after the holiday break, kind of as a baseline test to establish where we are when we reopen the doors because of, there is a lot of anxiety right now. That's going to be the next part of our discussion around surges and the implications of surges on the schools. But they're going to gear up to come to school committee on 12-15 and kind of present to you what an, what an implementation and testing plan might look like. And I think they're going to target the secondary level to begin and also give you a sense of what the cost would be and what the cost benefit would be. So they're really digging into, if we take on something like this, is there benefit to the school district and to the community at large to be able to monitor and put in place an early warning system, so to speak, if we start to see rises in cases? And I think the benefit on the school side that we're, we think is there is that the early warning would allow us to do more targeted isolations and, and school-based quarantine as to, as opposed to having to go to the full flip to remote every time there may be a party with unidentified guests, because you would actually have a running data pool that would inform our decision-making instead of responding to something we think we may know. I know, I'm sure everyone's reading the papers and watching the news. It seems to be at least one or two secondary schools a week seem to be flipping to remote only because of some type of social gathering that takes place within the community. So I think we want to try to defend against that because consistency and continuity. So it's good to have the kids in, and I think what we're seeing at the elementary right now is things have settled. It's not perfect. It's not everybody, it's not the perfect system for everybody and not all things about it are awesome. But we do have kids coming into school on a regular basis. There's an established routine and we've stuck to a routine now for four-plus weeks and we're not making another change. So with that routine comes inconsistency, comes the ability to now build on that and actually achieve some of the gains that everyone's looking for in the classroom from having kids in person. So what we're trying to do is when we open it up, we really want it to stick and we don't want to have to toggle in and out unless it's conditions beyond our control.
Pam, I, sure. Go ahead, Annie.
I just wanted, so a couple of people had asked, can we close proactively or after the holidays? And I thought we had learned that the governor, we can't do that, that's true. We can't plan on closing after holidays.
So this is a response with all due respect, the governor's comments are his wishes, but then he tends to follow it with, it's ultimately a local decision. So if some, if it is something that you'd want to really discuss in depth, I would say on 12-1, let's bring our Board of, I mean, the Board of Health reps have been, you know, really, really helpful in this process in terms of informing us about, helping us to understand how we should look at certain things. So I would have a couple of reps here on 12-1 to talk to us about whether or not that's a true benefit to us and whether it's something we should be concerned with. I know, you know, both Tricia and Joanne are bringing in Board of Health reps to talk with the staff about how to keep themselves safe. You know, again, we understand the pressure to get people in and I applaud other communities and my colleagues in other districts who have found ways that work well for them to do it. I think we are still trying to work with staff and alleviate concerns over the number of students that they'll be having contact with in a, in a day and in a week. Because the way we, the way our schedule exists, so the five-period, the waterfall schedule where students are taking, you know, seven classes and we're rotating all the way through is very different than having a four-by-four schedule where kids are taking two to four classes per day. So a teacher in our district is going to see, if you're at, at the middle school, between 120 and 130 different students in a week, in a closed environment, you know, at six feet apart. So there are just, there are concerns there that we're still working through with staff. And the same is true at the high school level, and the kids will also be intermingling with one another. So we are trying to work through the ability to make that as safe an environment as possible. So long way of saying, we think surveillance testing may have a place in that. And if you want to discuss whether or not we should be pursuing a two-week hiatus post holidays, I think they would be more than willing to come in and guide us in that discussion.
I'm not interested in it. I just didn't want to be, I don't know, telling people that the governor.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, Pam. Thank you for the updates. And I think it's, it's worth noting as, and we hear the message from parents on both sides of having the kids, having the kids back in in hybrid. And I agree with a lot of the concerns that have been voiced there. I also agree with a lot of the concerns voiced around safety. I think it's worth noting here because as has been pointed out, or just in this, in this forum of the social gatherings that have gone on to the point where it's even on the police Facebook pages. I suppose as a community, we also need everybody. That's a major, that during negotiations, that was a concern of several participants. So, you know, how do we know that parents and students are behaving responsibly through this? And seeing ongoing events, public events that involve quantities of people that are that big is a real deterrent to people feeling safe and comfortable in schools and teaching, as well as deterring other parents from sending their kids in and having that social gathering that, that's important. So it's, it takes a community. I hope we can, I look forward to hearing about how we can accelerate, but I also keep in mind the, that we're going to have to look at the metrics and as part of the metrics, we can't have a behavioral metric, but it almost feels like I wish there was. So thank you for keeping it all moving forward.
It's a, it's a team effort.
I have one question for Pam. It's Teresa.
Yep.
Slight tangent, but not too much. So you had mentioned, you know, of course, that, that there are concerns with the hybrid as well, and I'm not trying to get into those. But on that note, I think this is a good time to ask, given how heavy our schedule is coming up with focusing on getting secondary toward hybrid, when are we going to have an update from the elementary situation? Because I know there are parents that have those concerns that might wish to make public comments that are looking at the agendas and want to know when we're going to be having that kind of an update.
Let me take a look at the calendar and see when we can schedule something.
Okay. But I, I mean, I would say we're always having an update on what's happening with education and the current system. And if elementary school parents want to come anytime and make a public comment, they don't have to wait until elementary is on the agenda.
Definitely not. I think the, the concern is, is if we have an elementary update on the agenda, then likely the principal is there and potentially Julie Riley and, you know, that sort of thing. What are the questions?
We, we do have Julie scheduled right now for 12-1 to kind of give us a lay of, like an up, general update on curriculum and instruction under the hybrid. I want to look at the, sometimes we overschedule ourselves into three and four-hour sessions. So I do want to go back after tonight's meeting and just make sure it makes sense and perhaps talk with Sarah as to whether or not we want to spread a couple of things out if we feel like we're going to get into a deeper discussion of budget, because we're going to have to postpone some of our budget work from tonight to that evening as well. So there may be a little schedule realignment.
Got it.
But it's a point well taken. And as always, the people who really have the answers to, I tend to find the, the parent questions are tend, tend to be best answered at the school level because a lot of times it's about what is going on in a student's class or how the particular school is organizing and addressing something that's a, that's a universal or a global piece for the district. So I've kind of got the, the high-level view and I know conceptually, but if something's not functioning right in your fourth grade class, you really want to reach out first to that teacher and then to the principal. And if you feel like you're not being heard, you can, people can always call my office and I can help facilitate lines of communication. That's what I'm here for. All right. I don't know what, what to pick next. I think I'll go to seeing as versus on COVID, this is, I'm tossing this out there to the committee to ask a couple of questions and to see if there's follow-up work that we should do in a subcommittee. So the comments that are being brought up that the governor made about trying to get us to a more, everybody in school, more days, more hours, came on the heels of the reorganization of the COVID, what they call the COVID stoplight map. So if you recall the summer, we made our, we kind of came to a decision as a committee that we were going to start in that phased approach and then a week or so later, this map appeared on the scene. And with the map came the controversy that the map should actually be guiding your way, not the local work as we had originally all been asked to do this summer. So la, I think it was 11-6 was the meeting when he started talking about conditions and pushing on getting back to school, getting more kids back to school. They came out with this reorganized map and I believe it was a change of, one week it was 122 districts or towns were in the red and then the next week it dropped off considerably. And I can't cite the number off the top of my head because it just went out. But anyway, there's been a lot of chat as to how that could have happened. My basic, my best understanding is that when they changed, when they tried to address commentary and feedback that they were getting from communities, they were trying to address two things, institutional clusters. So if you take a community, I think of North Andover, because Merrimack College was really having some hotspots and some outbreaks. So you have a community that has a large institution like a prison, a college, or a nursing facility, and it has an outbreak. And that institution puts your entire community in the red. So I think people were asking, communities were asking for relief if there was an institutional cluster that wasn't really reflective of the broader community so that they didn't have to dial back their phased-in business plans as well as dial back anything that they had going on in schools. In addition to that, there was also feedback, I believe to the governor's office, to the Department of Ed, that under the previous formula, that towns like ours with small populations would hit red rather quickly when you were at the eight out of 100,000 cases. So that did not seem to be fair. I mean, I know our friends in Georgetown, they were all set to go back in hybrid this summer and then overnight they went to red and they had to throwback. So they've been taking feedback and trying to make adjustments based on that. So I think the intent is honest and good and it's to take into consideration more in some of the nuances in, in trying to track this. So what's on the screen in front of you is really just the new formula. So we would be in the under 10,000 population. It will take us, you know, at least 25 cases to be able to go into the red designation. And that's the red designation at the time was the designation that would have said, you're not ready to go back to school, yellows the warning, et cetera, et cetera. So I offer this, not that we have to make any decisions tonight, but to say, we created indicators based on the old construction of the map. Is there any concern about our indicator tracking to this or are we comfortable with the changes and it makes sense because this is the new guideline? If you think we need to go back and revise, then I think we send this back to the committee that was working on that to dig in, reach out to our town partners and Board of Health to see if we need to get a better understanding and come up with something that's more, more practical for us. So this is a discussion for the committee. I'm just looking for some feedback.
Annie, three things to add.
So, I, I think that we would just, I, I think the new indicator or the new map is fine. And I think what we've been doing internally at school is managing cases as they arise in the, arise in the institution. So I mean, think about Hamilton, one, having that hit from Gordon College, which was really isolated to Gordon College. And so if, I, I would appreciate that we would probably have, you know, some conversations with our local Boards of Health and that they would help guide our decision. But if a, an outbreak is isolated to a certain demographic or a certain institution, I don't think that should sway what we're doing in schools unless there's overlap. But I, I think you've been managing it fine in terms of the, the two things, I think there's just two things, right? In the elementary schools where we had to do some very focused closing or focused hybrid, then I don't know why that wouldn't continue.
Right. So this is the community designation.
Yeah.
So we have been a steady gray. What it's done essentially, what some people are taking issue with, and I just, I'm relaying the concern, is that previously you would have eight cases in our, in either Manchester or Essex, and you would likely go to red under the old formula. Under the new formula, you're going to be up to 25 cases before you're designated red. Is that of concern to the committee in any way? Or is it something that we don't understand enough and you would like researched more by a subgroup?
I understand it and I think it matters where it's happening. So I think you've had the discretion to make decisions within the school and that's where I would rather the decision-making happen.
Okay. I agree. And I think, you know, when we get to a point, if, let's hope it doesn't happen, but we get to a point where there are more than 25 total cases, I don't think it's going to be overnight. I think we have an ongoing dialogue with our public health professionals and I think we will kind of be able to see that.
professionals. And I think we will kind of be able to see that percolating and see how it is manifesting in the schools, if it is at all. And I think we can be ahead of that. I, I don't, I agree with Annie. I don't really see anything we need to change. I mean, I think we've got a pretty good metric system in place. We know what to look for regardless of what these metrics are. I think they are pretty much, I know the numbers change, but I think our, the way we're going to be operating doesn't really change. So I don't, I don't,
yeah.
The only other thing that's of concern to me is these stories that we're hearing about large gatherings in either town. I know that there were parties in Essex on Halloween, and there were parties in Manchester as well. And I just think that the, the people in our communities are going to determine whether or not our schools stay open. So we're going to look out for the health and safety of the folks that are in our buildings. And if we hear of something that is concerning, we're going to close the schools because there were people or families involved in parties. And I just, I think it's important for parents to just be mindful of the fact that you've got to be really careful about what you're doing and not have kid parties where kids could be getting infected.
Yeah. It's a public responsibility. We all have a piece of this, right? We all need to cooperate in that sandbox. The rules apply to everybody. All I'm saying on that.
I said, I had a couple, I had a couple of things. I think, so the, the color coding frustrated, frustrated me.
Never heard from him.
I'm sorry. Yeah. This one frustrated me because, you know, the quick and, the quick and dirty communication to either the community or your staff has been, you know, red means no, you know, like, so it's, we, we, so we experienced this down in Foxborough. We're a regional school and our sending district is Brockton. And we went from over 90% of our communities were in the red to 25% overnight. So we had to kind of re-message the whole thing because we were just kind of following that methodology. So I think the communication around it needs to be careful. I would actually say, at this point, almost disregard the colors and like Shannon and Anne have said, to kind of look more at just the underlying case count and what trends those, those cases are going in. Because when you kind of completely revamp the methodology, while, while the underlying data doesn't change, it makes it really hard to recommunicate it, especially when people don't understand the nuance of this specific graph. So I would just, I would caution, I would, my personal opinion is almost disregard the colors and just look at the underlying numbers. I just think it's a clear picture of what's going on. Because who knows, they could change it in two months again, and we could be trying to re-message a whole new thing. Also, I know it ties into that November 6 memo. I don't know if, you know, if Manchester, if there's going to be an audit involved with that, but that's just something as well. Because they've tied the indicators to their recommendations for reopening. And that's, that's a hard kind of hurdle to overcome as well.
I don't think at this point, my last conversation with the Department of Ed was a very positive one. They were comfortable with our plan as we laid it out, which was we had the mid-October return for the elementary school that staggered in on the two weeks. And that, at that time, we were very, we were pretty clear that our intent was to target the semester break to bring back the secondary. And they did not have any concern with that or voice any concern with that at that time. So I know that the lines of communication are open, you know, so.
Because that was quite a, quite an about-face they did on, on the 6th, which is, again, not that they're, not, not questioning their, their intent or their decision-making, but just, again, you work, you know, we've been consistently communicating one message for four months. And then to completely have that changed overnight was, is a hard thing to kind of re-message.
I, I completely agree with you. And I don't really want to step into the politics of it, but I'm just not even sure who knew what messages were coming out and which weren't. I mean, we had a heads up that they were going to preview the map. And as you said, Matt, so much of, you know, so many groups, so many schools have indicators that tie to the map. And now, how do, how you get to red is totally different. So you have people who are related, because it makes it easier to achieve a goal of getting kids back to school, and people who feel like the thing has been reordered to deflate the reality, which is we've got growing numbers, and one day you have all of this red, and now there's more green. And I don't even want to begin to, I don't have an opinion on it. I'm just kind of relaying how it's played out. And I think everyone was surprised at that meeting because that's not what we were anticipating hearing that day. We thought it was going to be more of a concentrated discussion about how to interpret this and, and how, how it would play out. And it spun into something very different.
Yeah. So I guess going forward, my opinion is, we say, you know, case counts are trending directions versus colors, because I think that's a clearer picture.
Great. I'm fine. I just felt like we should have a discussion about it because it's, it's out there and this is helpful. And then I'm going to end with just kind of a, a public service announcement. So I mentioned snow days. Snow days will be remote unless there is, I, I think I said this last meeting, but this is going to go up in writing and get posted, unless there's a power or a technical outage. So if, if we can't connect with kids and, and deliver remote instruction, then we will have to make up the day. Otherwise, as we're structured, we should be able to just have the kids who were supposed to be coming in, stay at home and go about our business. And we'll do typical announcements via Connect Ed so that people know where they're supposed to be at any given time. And then this is a hot topic right now. It's a concern among staff, both for themselves personally, for coming back to school after the break. There's so much messaging around Thanksgiving and how you should conduct your family business and who should come over. And there's competing camps. So once again, we're caught in the middle. But I do think we'll, I know we'll be sending out to families, just a reminder that if you are traveling out of state, Mass has, as of today, designated most of the rest of the country as red. So if you travel to any of those locations, there's a protocol for quarantining and testing upon return. So if you do go out of state to New York for the holiday weekend, you probably won't be coming back to school if you're in person, if you're at the elementary level right away when you get back. You're going to have to go through a testing process or a quarantining process or a combination of the two. So it changes daily. Everything is laid out quite clearly at, on the COVID travel site, on the mass.gov landing page. And we will send that out in an email, like we did a posting, I think, before the Columbus State weekend. And as always, on, on anything COVID, whether you should come to school, whether your symptoms really rise to the level, whether you, you know, you shot down to Rhode Island to visit a family member, and what should I do? The nurses are our go-to people on interpreting this and helping families make decisions about whether it's safe for everyone for you to come to school. They're there to answer your calls. Don't hesitate to reach out and, and get advice from them, because they're, they're fantastic at talking people through these issues. So that's, those are my two public service announcements to end. And I'm happy to answer any questions on topics that you thought I was going to cover and maybe I forgot to.
Ma'am, Pam, can you, in your communication out to families about quarantine and quarantine to return to school, can you be explicit about what those, not give a link, but actually map it out? Because I wouldn't probably click on a link.
We don't map it out. I've talked about this with the nurses, because it, because it changes regularly.
It's going to change.
The nurses want them to go to the link and just go to the latest information posted by the state and follow that protocol.
That's going to change between now and Thanksgiving.
It possibly could.
Well, there you go.
Like maybe Rhode Island, I mean, it's out of our control. We don't, the request is, I would hate for somebody to use something that I copied and pasted into an email that got updated on the state site, and then we have an issue. I think it's safest to send people to the most current information and the folks who are putting it together. And this is where, you know, to Ken's comment about, we're, we're going to need people to click the link and, and just take a minute to think about how their actions are going to impact other people. And that's what's going to keep us moving forward. So I will try to be explicit in that it's very important for them to click the link and that right now, the majority of the country is considered a restricted travel zone. This is really on the honor system. And I think that's something we talk a lot about when trying to develop comfort levels among people. There's a lot of trust involved in this process. It's trusting that others are going to follow the rules with the same fidelity that you're willing to, so that we're creating safe spaces for everyone. And really, we've had discussions about the fact that you create the, the safety level for those that are most vulnerable, so everybody can participate and everybody can be protected. So please click the link.
Thank you, Pam.
And that's not in the electoral map, right?
Yeah. Bad, Annie, bad. All right.
All right. I'll go back to the agenda.
I think Jordan's ready. I can see him in my panel.
As I transition out, is he next?
Well, he was first. Yeah, he's next after your report, the new insight into hybrid indicators.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
I'm sorry, Jordan.
It's okay. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Cool. So I'll be very brief. The MIA really hasn't provided athletic directors with much information on winter sports. I do know that today, the sports committees met with the sports medicine committees and finalized sports modifications. And that, the meeting tomorrow with the COVID task force to be approved. And then on Friday with the Board of Directors. So hopefully by Friday, we have an idea of what the winter will look like. The start date right now is November 30. The MIA, there's rumors that they're going to push it back. We are not going to start November 30, no matter what the MIA does. Potentially the 14th of December and potentially even after the break, depending on how things go. But I can say that the structure of the season will be similar to what we did this fall. That's all I have.
I have a question. Pam's talking with her myself again. My question is, when you say "we," do you mean the Cape Ann League?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is, I, I'm having a hard time imagining how we would play anything indoors, any contact sports indoors, and not be able to have 10 people in a room eating Thanksgiving dinner. So I'll be interested in seeing how that's managed.
I fixed my mute problem. That was my question. So basketball is still squarely on the table at this point?
Correct.
At least for discussion and planning.
Correct. The only official sport that's gotten moved is wrestling, which we don't have. It was recommended that track got moved to fall two, which is where football is right now. And that's because of Reggie Lewis is closed still. And they want to kind of put together an extended spring season with more outdoor, winter track being more outdoor than indoor.
Jordan, do you know if they're talking about any testing protocols for any of the winter sports? Is this something that came up with our Board of Health and the advisory meeting, that they might be able to do some of the rapid tests before, like before a big game?
I have not heard that.
Okay.
Yes.
If you're Jamie, you might want to turn off your mic. Thanks, Pam. All right. Is that Mr.? Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Sorry, I, I blew the agenda.
No problem.
Now we're all confused. We're up to the playground.
Yes. So unfortunately, Avi couldn't be here tonight unexpectedly. So Jason has joined me to help me remember where we were at and answer any technical questions you are. So I believe tonight, really, it's a formal vote to proceed and to be, execute the plan for construction. And in your packet, we included the most up-to-date drawings of, of what the project was to look like. So I know Avi probably would have provided a little bit more detail as to where we are. But I think the, the main reason it's on the agenda is just so we have the official go-forward vote by the committee, so we don't lose any time and can get in the pipeline for a, a spring construction. Jason, is there anything you'd like to run them through in terms of the timeline? My understanding is that if we order by December and get in the queue, we'd be looking at a start date when weather cooperates in late spring?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Pam. So right now, if we're looking at getting Compan a PO, say, December 1, if you guys may recall, we have one very large structure. Right now, that's about a 20-week lead time. There's that large structure right there at the bottom of the screen. So right now, that's about a 20-week lead time. So if we're able to get that PO in, say, December 1, we're looking at, you know, maybe a mid-April, you know, early May delivery time. The other pieces are more traditional, kind of, not saying they're in stock, but, you know, a little more kind of available. Those are an eight to 12-week lead time. But the big thing is that main structure, kind of the centerpiece of the new playground, that's a 20-week lead time. So that would put us to about, again, a mid-April, a mid-April, early May installation of that playground. And that main structure is what needs to be done first. Like, we can't put in the other pieces around and then put the large structure in. We need to put that in first, because that kind of determines the appropriate use zone. So that's why it's important to, to get that main structure kind of ordered. And, and so that's why, again, with December 1, given we can order, put us around mid-April or early May.
What's preventing you from ordering it now? If we approve it tonight, why can't you order it tomorrow?
Um, well, again, you're talking about, again, sure, awesome. That'd be great. We can, you know, again, putting in a PO, again, we're saying December 1, just to give us some, you know, some question. But sure, we can get it in if it gets approved tonight. Put in a PO, again, as Pam mentioned, you know, Avi's not here for a little bit, you know, we got Thanksgiving. So again, we just said it December 1, just to kind of give us some, some buffer.
And then if you order it now, there's no storage cost, right? Because we're going to be, you know, preparing and assembling already for, for it when arrived, right?
Yep. Yep.
And, and I know that we've been concerned about cost escalation. So in the spring, this was 300,000. Have we seen any escalation in labor or equipment since that time?
We, we have not. That price is still good, still firm.
And we've, we've confirmed that recently.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
Just for me, since I'm new on all of this. So once we vote to move forward with this tonight, we don't have to revisit it again. It's, the project is now moved forward. They ordered all the pieces at the right time to come in at the right time, and we, we just go forward.
Yes.
Awesome.
So do you want a motion to approve the Compan?
I really, really do, yes.
So move to approve the Compan order for the Essex Eagles Nest Playground.
Second. Ken.
Okay, Ken was second. So Eric?
Yes.
Anna?
Wow, what was that? Absolutely, yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Hey, hooray.
Hey.
Yay. Thank you for being here for the questions tonight, Jason, and for working on this.
Oh, no problem. I, I just wanted to say again, thank you to everyone that's kind of worked on this. You know, we can now start focusing kind of on, kind of the site plan and some other steps kind of surrounding the playground. But again, it's great to kind of work with everyone. So thank you, people that are members of the Playground Committee and the School Committee as well.
Thank you, Jason. You've done a tremendous amount of work on this yourself. Thanks for being available tonight.
This is fun stuff.
It's going to be awesome.
Yeah, it will. It's going to be great.
Yeah, thank you. All right. So, um, now we get to the budget. I don't know how we do budget with no Avi. I mean, I know we can do it, but it's the same.
It's not the same. And he and I were going to be working on some of the COVID expense update. So we've been trying to track, um, the expenses. He's been working on a couple of reports, uh, for, for FEMA, for the state, for the CARES money. He's been working with, um, Brendan in Essex in terms of, um, accounting for some potential, um, money that could be coming our way from the CARES Act dollars that went to both towns. So we're going to put that COVID update on hold. The FY22 budget preparations, we're underway there, and I believe we covered last time that, um, our goal for December 1 is to give you, um, an overview of the operational budget, but we're building the operational budget, uh, to just reflect our typical three and a half to 4% annual increase, um, to maintain level services. And our focus will be in the early months on the, on modeling the five-year, um, escalation in our budget and its impact on our utilization of reserves, and also a review of our capital projects. Because those tend to be two areas that our partners on the town side are most interested in, but the areas when we do our traditional budget and planning for program that we probably spend, uh, less time on. So we're going to flip it a little bit this year, uh, because we know that we really aren't in a position to be, um, doing too much other than our standard operating for next year, and that will be, uh, what we start talking about on December 1st. So December 1st is lining up to be a lengthy meeting, which is why I think, Sarah, you and I should probably look at the things we want covered between now and the break and make sure that we don't overload any one meeting. Okay, because it won't, won't be as active. So that was really it on the budget side.
Okay.
For 20, for 22. It was really good, we were really going to delve, try to delve into where we were with COVID dollars.
Pam, I have a quick question on the budget. At one point, we talked about, and I may not be, um, verbalizing this properly, but at one point, we had talked about, um, kind of a, a budget and then sort of like a, an additional COVID budget on top of the fiscal 22 budget. Are we still thinking in terms of that, you know, just the regular operational budget like you talked about, and then kind of like that plus COVID?
Great catch. I should have said that. Yeah, so there'll be like the COVID amendment to the operational budget. So what we'll do is we'll capture all of the additional personnel, additional maintenance, additional investments we have to make to facilities, and any other things that are associated specifically with implementing under the guidelines, and capture them kind of in a secondary, like a supplemental budget page. So that can either be carried forward with the budget. It can be, you know, allocate, we could do an allocation from reserves. We could talk to the town about alternate financial, uh, financing streams, and/or we can rip that page off if we have some miraculous developments between now and next year, and our budget to operate, our basic program will still be in existence. Because I think what we had said last time, and this was probably in the finance subcommittee meeting, if we rolled in what we already have spent on COVID alone to the operating, it's through the roof in terms of a percentage increase, right? So we were talking about utilizing just $300,000 in reserves for elementary staffing. That alone is, is not feasible to carry in the operating budget. So, yes, great catch. There will be a COVID, a supplemental page that covers COVID expenses alone. And I think we're anticipating, I don't know if people are hearing the news differently than I am, that we're probably going to be in some form of what we're doing through the fall of next year in terms of enhanced protocols and measures and distancing.
Great.
Um, uh, a bird told me that, um, our, our playground vote had to include dollars, um, a movement, a movement of dollars because of the account. Is that, um?
Thank you, Gail.
Yeah. Yeah. So can I revise my, um, motion to include a dollar amount of $299,986.21? Who seconded the motion?
Um, Ken did.
I did.
All right. Do we need to screw again? Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thanks, Gail. Thank you, Gail, for your patience and mistake.
Pam, can I just ask one thing on the budget?
Sure.
We just, I'm not sure what you got, or how, I'm not sure how the process works yet. Obviously, I'm the new guy there, but, um, we're looking for technology needs for Fall 21. We're hearing, get your orders in by December, like six to eight-month lead time. So I don't know kind of how the process works, but, uh, obviously, I know we usually don't start thinking about that stuff till the spring, but we're hearing, really start thinking about it December, at the latest January, if you want to shot at it in September. So just, if you're hearing the same thing, probably, I'm assuming, but if anything needs to get done, um, I would encourage, I would encourage an accelerated timeline.
But I, I appreciate the tip, and I know we have, we are, we have put so much into technology investment this year. I can't imagine we need large purchases for the fall.
Well, if you have to like, I'm not sure if you have to like paint out Chromebooks or something, yes. Especially the low-end stuff, like the, the student stuff. You can get high-end stuff still, but the low-end student, like Chromebook stuff is, is, is really hard to get. Yeah.
Great. One more, one more thing.
Are we, um, are we, do we have a PPE for, um, the spring? Uh, I know we did three months in, in September, but how are we doing with that right now?
Yeah, and I don't know if Jason's still on the call, but, um, I had that same question. How, you know, how are we running against what we ordered? Um, with, you know, we're bringing back 800 kids, um, to the high school, middle school in the spring, so we'll need more materials. But Jason was already ahead of me, had done inventory and had put in, um, additional orders, so we are on top of it. But it looks like he may have jumped off at this point. We are in good shape with PPE. Jason, you're still there? He may have walked away.
It happens.
But he, yeah, so he, uh, in a nutshell, he confirmed that we are, um, on solid footing with our PPE going into second semester.
Good. All right. That's it for, um, continued business on the agenda. Any school committee comment?
Motion to adjourn?
Actually, before we adjourn, I just, I just want to impound my look forward to the open house, um, and, and I wanted to just pass on again my thanks to everybody at the school. I know it's been a struggle for everybody involved, and my own family, some of whom are in the basement, some of whom are upstairs, but everybody is cooped in, and I think they found the staff and the faculty empathetic in doing their best throughout all this. And I really want to emphasize what, echo what Sarah said at the beginning, if people are facing difficulties with their kids, we have received emails of that, please, please, reach out. Um, we're trying our best to, I guess, as a district, to meet everybody's needs collectively, but I think in some ways it may be, it is possible, even though the larger picture is harder, to address individual needs as they come up. So please reach out to district, to parent or to principals and teachers if needed. So that was just my plug.
Yeah, that's a good plug.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have some closing words? I know Annie is ready to leave, but...
I'll second Annie's motion then.
All right. Um, all in favor? Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Um, Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.